All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome to Friday Commissioners' Court. Let's stand and have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for a new day, for a distinctive change to fall, cooler weather, and we've been waiting for that. And we thank you for that and a bit of rain. We thank you for the agenda that you've placed before us today and pray for your guidance and wisdom that you would direct us to make the appropriate decisions. We are grateful for our guests that have come today and just pray that this will be an interesting opportunity for them. We pray for this county, that you would bless our residents, bless our taxpayers, bless the employees that work for this county, for this city. We pray for our first responders and for their protection at all times, for our servicemen and women that serve abroad, that you would ultimately bring them back home safely. Lord, we just, again, now turn this agenda over to you and ask for your blessing. In Christ's name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'd like to welcome our guests today. We have somewhat of a special day. We normally meet on Mondays, but today we meet on Friday due to the three-day holiday. So, thank you for being here with us. Today is the 11th of October, 2019, our first regular meeting of the month. And we begin now with item number one, which is our time for public comments or requests for information on any non-agenda items in accordance with our Texas Open Meetings Act. Is there anyone that would like at this time to address the court on a non-agenda item? All right, we'll move to item number two. I've got two sets of minutes for us to consider. One was our last meeting of the month of September, where we handled normal Commissioners' Court business, and then we had a special meeting where we approved a couple of changes to our employee benefits package related to dental insurance and vision insurance and life insurance. So let's begin with the set of minutes from the 23rd.
Make a motion.
Motion for approval of that set of minutes is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And item number three, considering possibly approved minutes from that special meeting regarding insurance that was on September 27th.
Make a motion.
Motion is made again by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
And approved by Commissioner Parker, seconded by Commissioner Parker. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we get on to some fun part of our meeting, one of those anyway, a presentation by Ms. Callie Zeller, our Ag Extension Agent, and this is regarding some comments that she has for us to inform us and educate us about National 4-H Week. She's got some young ladies here with her today to help bring that message.
Well, good morning, everyone. Today, we are celebrating National 4-H Week here in Titus County, and the theme this year is Inspire Kids to Do. 4-H is the nation's largest youth development organization with over 6 million youth involved throughout the United States. And so to celebrate today, we wanted to kind of share some of the activities that our 4-Hers have been doing since the new 4-H year began and the new school year began in September. But more importantly, we wanted to bring some 4-H members with us today so that they had the opportunity to share what they've been doing in 4-H, and so they get good leadership experience. And so I would like to introduce with me today Ms. Keely Gibson. Her parents are Blaine and Haley Gibson. And then we have Ms. Kami Terrell, and her parents are Matthew and Savannah Terrell. And so I'm going to turn the microphone over to these guys, and they are going to share some of their 4-H experiences and what they've been doing. So, you guys want to come up?
My name is Keely Gibson, and I go to Paul Puitt Junior High School, and I show hogs through 4-H. In sale order at the fair, I placed an 11th out of 33 pigs. My pig's name was Squirt.
What was that?
My pig's name was Squirt.
Okay, and that's not your nickname. I misunderstood.
Hi, I'm Kami. I go to Hearts Above ISD. I'm in fourth grade. I do identification. I've been to two fairs, the East Texas State Fair, I made an 84, and then on the Dallas State Fair, I made a 28. Forty on the Dallas one and 25 on the East Texas State Fair.
Very good, very good.
These girls-
Thank you, ladies. That's tough to do.
It is, it is. These girls have done a fantastic job this year. Keely did an awesome job showing her pig this year at the Titus County Fair. You could really, really tell how hard she worked, and it really did show in the show ring. Kami has been working every week, practicing, learning plants and how to identify them. Like she said, she competed in the East Texas State Fair and then the State Fair of Texas at Dallas. And they're getting ready to go to Fort Worth in January. So, these girls have done an awesome job, and we are so very proud of them. And we're very proud that they came here today because it's, like you said, it is pretty hard to get up here and speak. So we do have a pretty young group here in Titus County 4-H, but we're definitely proud of them for getting up and getting the courage to speak to you guys about their 4-H experiences.
How old do you have to be before you can join?
You have to be eight in the third grade.
Eight in the third grade, and it goes all the way up through high school?
High school, yes, 18 years old.
Okay, how many do you have participating now?
We have about 20 kids participating right now, so.
Okay.
And we're looking to expand that, so.
Very good. Well, girls, thank you again for coming. I appreciate that. Ms. Terrell, will you do me a favor? Tell your mother that Judge Lee said hello, okay? All right, she used to help me at the bank, okay? Anything else we need to know?
Well, we have some goodies for you guys today, and I think the girls are going to pass those out. So, Keely and Kami, y'all want to hand out the... We have some 4-H cups that have candy in them with the 4-H motto and pledge on them. And then we also have some AgriLife Extension hats for you guys, so we hope you enjoy that. And just wanted to share and help celebrate National 4-H Week in Titus County. So, thank you, guys.
Appreciate, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Will you give Squirt a hug for Commissioner Fitch?
Thank you, dear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, again for coming. We appreciate it, and thank you for what you two do with these kids. Y'all are welcome to stay as long as you would like. You may be bored and you may want to leave, but you're welcome to stay, okay? All right, let's go to item number five, considering possibly approved selection of election judges and alternate judges for our upcoming elections. Pam Holmes is here to tell us about this selection.
I...it's pretty simple. It's just what it says it is there. The Texas Election Code requires us to submit our selections for the judges and alternates, and there are specific reasons why the partisans, the parties have certain judges at those boxes. And so, the Republican Party Chair submitted this list for the Republicans, and then the Election Code requires me to submit a list if I don't get one from the Democratic Party Chair. So, I just used the one that has been submitted for last year, and so, did you all get a copy of that? Do you need a copy of the list?
I will...why don't we read? I'd like to read into the record who these are.
Sure.
That way they'll know, or you can read them in. Is there anything else we need to know?
No.
Why don't I read these names, just so we get them on the record? I'm going to first read to you the Democratic judges. Bruce Oco, Helen Rockwell, Barbara Jackson, Betty Russell, Regina Graham, Janice Chisholm, Vivian Shepherd, Donna Norman, Shirley Caruthers, Edith Wilson, and Bridget Mentor. The Republican list-
Go over to the next column, please, because you didn't get all the precincts.
Oh, I didn't. That's right. I was thinking that was additional information on each of those. Derek Allen, Sylvia Morales, Grace G., Waylon Payne, Mary Castoraina, Lisa Lied, Kay Nelms, Bobby Williams, and Aileen Lindsey. Moving to the Republican list, Billy Clark, Karen Gatherer, Colette Schumate, Tim Blair, Tammy Case, Debbie Hinaosa, Jenna Solomon, Neta Walker, Cindy Harrison, Gary Oliver, Robin Harris, Beverly Hinson, Paula Dial, Diane Owens, Phyllis Welch, Linda Zapata, Sharon Cutler, Rhonda Kittle, Frank Stringham. The early voting presiding judge, Paula Dial. The early ballot board presiding judge, Emily Aitman. And the central count presiding judge, Nigel Christopher. If anybody would like a copy of these, I'll be glad to make them for you later. Anything else we need to know?
No, we are getting geared up for this upcoming election on November 5th, and there's going to be two full weeks of early voting. I say full weeks, not including weekends, and that begins on October 21st, so don't buy it.
That's a Monday?
That is a Monday.
Monday through Friday, then Monday through Friday.
That's correct. One of those, I think Thursday of that last week is Halloween, so that might be interesting.
It's all right. Any significant changes in voting procedure, at least for early voting? Over there is your office.
No, we may reverse the flow to see how that works, so we'll be having people come in the Madison Street side door and go out the Alabama door.
Can they come in the handicap ramp side?
They certainly can. That's for our handicap voters, and so we do keep that open. And, but the entrance to, like, the line to come through will be through that my office door there.
Okay, and then they flow out towards the post office?
Yes.
Okay, I like that. All right, thank you for this.
Okay, thank you.
You need approval on these? You've heard the names, need a motion to approve these for Pam?
Make a motion.
Motion for approval of these two lists of election judges made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, let's go to...yes?
It was pointed out to me by the studies that Jenny Solomon can't be an election judge because she's her friend. She's my partner, so she can be.
Okay, all right, y'all get that. Jenna Solomon was on your Republican list, and she's...we're going to mark her off there. Any other changes to that?
No.
Will you need to replace her?
I will.
Okay.
So, I'll get with...so, you can say what you want to do about that.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, it's your turn here. Item number six, report from Commissioners regarding roadwork status. I'll start Precinct 1, please.
Well, we patched, replaced, and installed culverts, and then this week was the other precincts, and our crews helped them seal coat.
All right, so we did a lot of cleaning of some ditches. We cleaned 1065 and put in a culvert, cleaned up a couple of trees that were down. We packed, we seal coated in Precinct 3 for two days, and then we seal coated in Precinct 1 one day or so. Then we seal coated in my precinct, Precinct 2, on 2325, 2710, 2475, 2715, 2720, and 2670. No, 2670, I'm not sure what road, anyway. And then we've been patching and cleaning some ditches on some roads this week, pulling some shoulders out and such, staying pretty busy.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we chip sealed a couple of roads, 3250 and 3270. We put in culverts around the county, and we've been mowing. We're finishing up Atalko and Sugar Hill next week, and we helped 2 and 4 chip seal as much as we did. We got to chip seal some this week. Appreciate everybody's help on that. We were able to do the north part of 3155 that we had worked on, and it's...we just wanted to get it sealed off before the rain started and all, so we had it set up real good, and it was ready to go. And we hit County Road 4205, County Road 4610, part of County Road 4550, part of...or all of County Road 4340, and part of County Road 4330. So, we were glad to be able to get that done. I had a couple more that really wanted to do, but the last day, Wednesday, when we ran, we didn't have...I mean, we had a little trouble with the spreader truck not wanting to start pumping because it was so cold, so we decided we better pull off and wait till later, till it warmed up. May have to wait till spring before we can go back in and do those others. But yesterday, we started back doing some patching, and if everything works out, we're probably going to hit the precinct Tuesday with the mowers, try to get everything mowed, and then we'll...we'll be back to patching and trying to work on some roads to get them ready for next spring then.
Be the last mowing of the year?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Item number seven, considering possibly approve an interlocal agreement between Titus County and Grayson County concerning holding of Grayson County prisoners in the Titus County Jail. Sheriff?
About a week ago, Grayson County reached up to us, was requesting if we could house some of their inmates. This is just a standard agreement. Of course, we...I think it'd be a good deal as we can, depends on our population, but yes, $50 a day per inmate. Of course, they, in especially like medical, they have to pay that. If we have to transport, they pay for transport. It's just, it's the standard. Well, nothing new in this contract.
Do they bring them and pick them up?
Yes, they bring and pick them up.
So you're not responsible really for any out-of-town transport?
No, but if we did, we'd get paid for it. So if we agreed to do it, they need some help, and we have the people to do it. But no, they're going to bring them.
How does that rate compare with what we've charged in the past?
It's pretty much the same.
About the same?
It's just a standard rate.
Okay, standard rate.
It's charged for the higher priority inmate.
Any predictions on what this will produce as far as numbers of prisoners?
Well, they're wanting to start off by giving us 15. Like I say, that depends on our population of jail if we can take 15. So right now, we can, but we just had a plea the other day. The DA brought a bunch of them over, and we're about to lose 10, and they're going to prison, so that's going to open up some room. So I'm hoping we can do the 15 to start off with. I think they're ready to start by two weeks, if they want to start, so it'll give us time to get ready.
Okay.
You know, I'm firing for...you know, we have to have one jailer per 49 inmates, and if our local population gets above that, you guys want to consider, so we can hold some of them, we can hire another jailer to do that. The only thing is, I'm just not sure how, you know, how many they're going to give us. I hate to hire another employee not knowing how steady this is going to be. So, right now, we're going to try to prevent that. And we might be able to take about 15 before we can kind of see how this is going to go. But yes, it's a standard deal. I think it's going to be good for the taxpayers here because there'll be more money being brought in, and you guys...general lessons, you guys can use wherever you need it.
Okay, so if you hit a certain level, you would have to hire somebody else?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it'd be worth it if we know they're going to leave them, and they're going to use us, but I don't...it's just hard to say how credit they're going to be to Grayson County, how many they're going to bring, and how many they're going to leave. So, we can kind of watch and see, and we'll be able to tell after we get into it. We'll, I think we'll know the decision to make on that sometime, but if it does, so we'll see.
And you've got the original still being prepared. That's a copy, and when you have that original, you'll get it to me first. You need signatures from all the Commissioners?
Yeah, this is just doctors, you guys can go ahead, because there's no doubt they're going to sign it, their Commissioners and their county judges up, and they're the ones that actually-
We'll sign that original when you get it.
We'll sign it.
Do you need all five of us?
Yes, sir. Yeah, you guys have to sign it. Now, I'm going to give this copy to y'all so you can look at it, issue any questions, but it's a standard. It covers everything, so y'all can make comments, sir.
Why don't you do that, let me email it to them or paper. I'll paper, give it to you if you need it in paper form, but I'll email it to them. Any questions for Sheriff about this before you consider approval? All right, if you think that sounds good, I will ask you for a motion to approve signing of this agreement with Grayson County, of course, pending their court's approval as well.
Make a motion.
Who said that first?
We said it about the same time, either one of them.
Motion is made by Commissioner Applewhite, seconded by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number eight, considering possibly approve nominations to the Titus County Appraisal District Board of Managers. This is something we do on a regular basis. We had some change-up the last time we did this. Let me tell you who our current board members are. Bobby Parr is the chair, Hewlin Mike Reynolds is the secretary, David Greider, Greg Holt, and Buddy Blue. They seem to have gotten us over the hump and got the luminous matter settled. I believe that we should support these guys and nominate this same group would be my recommendation. If you have other needs, this is not the vote, this is the nomination process. And you may have other nominees show up by the time the ballot is prepared, but as far as us submitting any nominees, we can submit one, we can submit multiples, we can submit some additionals to this list. It's completely up to you. Unless you have somebody specific in mind, again, I think that these guys are perfectly capable to lead us into the future, again, as far as a nomination. We could always reconsider something else if you find someone on that final ballot that you choose to vote for instead. That vote will need to occur before, I think it's mid-December, December 15. But for now, by October 30th, we want to make nominations.
Make a motion.
Is your nomination then to nominate the same existing five board members?
Yes, yes.
Okay, motion is made to do that by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor of nominating Bobby Parr, Hewlin Mike Reynolds, David Greider, Greg Holt, and Buddy Blues, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number nine, considering possibly approve a $5,000 bond for our county auditor. Ms. Barbara is here with us today, and she has signed all of the necessary paperwork to get this bond in place. And as we do with other officials, we have to approve these and get the signature on the bond itself, and so I would ask that you all do that today.
Make a motion, we approve it.
Motion to approve the bond for Barbara Sherbet is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'll get that signed after the meeting. Item number 10, considering possibly approve the 2020 Titus County Resolution Regarding Indigent Defense Program. This is also something we do each year. Indigent Defense Program is where we supply attorneys to represent folks that need the services of a defense attorney, specifically in criminal court, because they are unable to afford one, and these decisions to assign an attorney to one of these defendants is typically made by the justices of the peace at the time of magistration of the prisoner. And we are also provided with some funds by the state to help us with the cost of paying these attorneys. These attorneys are typically paid about $250 per case on a misdemeanor, $350 on felony matters, and so these fees add up. We are not completely covered by the state of Texas, but we want to participate in the Indigent Defense Grant Program. Allow me to read this to you. Whereas under the provisions of the Government Code, Section 79.037, and in Texas Administrative Code, Chapter 173, counties are eligible to receive grants from the Texas Indigent Defense Commission to provide improvements in indigent defense services to the county. Whereas this grant program will assist the county in the implementation and improvement of indigent criminal defense services, and whereas the Titus County Commissioners' Court has agreed that in the event of loss or misuse of the funds, the Titus County Commissioners assure that the funds will be returned in full to the Texas Indigent Defense Commission. Now therefore be it resolved and ordered that the county judge of the county is designated as the authorized official to apply for, accept, decline, modify, or cancel the grant application for the Indigent Defense Formula Grant Program and all other necessary documents to accept said grant. Be it further resolved that the county auditor is designated as the financial officer for this grant. Every other year, in odd years, we put together an Indigent Defense Plan, and that's currently being worked on at the first level by our two district court judges. So, that's again something that occurs every two years, but I would like for you all to approve this resolution so that we could again participate in the Indigent Defense Grant Program.
Make a motion, we approve it?
Motion is made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, item number 11. This is a mouthful, but we've got the experts here that are going to explain it to us. Considering possibly approve an order authorizing the issuance of Titus County Unlimited Tax Refunding Bonds, taxable Series 2019, appointing a pricing officer, and delegating the pricing officer the authority to approve the sale of bonds, establishing certain parameters for the approval of such matters, approving an escrow agreement and paying agent registrar agreement, levying an annual ad valorem tax for the payment of the bonds, and enacting other provisions relating to the subject. We welcome back John Martin, Hilltop Securities, that always watches out for us and lets me know when opportunities arise to strengthen our stance by getting us lower interest rates. And so we're grateful for the current climate out there that gives us perhaps a window of opportunity, and maybe will save us some money if we can get this deal done. So, John, I turn it over to you, and tell us what we need to know and make it simple for us.
Okay. Thank you, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm John Martin with Hilltop Securities. With me is Michael Martin from Hilltop Securities. There's relation there, it's my son that's working with me. It's my son that's working with me on this project. The, as you'd indicated, interest rates are very favorable. The markets, as you may follow in news items, that, you know, all it takes is a little bit of tweeting and the markets go haywire. So whether you're following interest rates or the stock market or whatever, these, it's moving more volatile than what we've seen in the past. There's big swings. As a result, what's happened is there's really been kind of a flight to quality, a flight to safety, and fixed income type, high-quality products. So that like a fixed rate of return, not really willing to play these volatile markets. And so the investment arena is really looking for a fixed return on their investment. That has driven down, because that's driven down interest rates so much, and you've seen that, you may have heard also on the news, that the Fed is talking about lowering a short-term interest rate. So that is all played in your favor. So these bonds that we're looking at, taking an opportunity to refinance were issued in 2012. They're not callable until 2021. But the way that we can do that, oddly enough, is, and those bonds were issued as tax-exempt bonds. Now, those were also part of, that was a part of the pass-through folding program for the loop. So some of the money comes back through the text dot and so forth, back to the county. So it's not, I know there's a, there's a part of the agenda item that talks about levying a tax, and that's just the standard Attorney General required language for the agenda item. This is actually going to reduce the payments is what we're looking at doing. And we're estimating somewhere between $350,000 to $400,000. And these, it would not, it will not extend your debt at all. You can keep the same term up to 2034. We're estimating the rate to be just under 2 and 3/4 percent.
Will you restate that $300,000 to $400,000 figure? So I want them...
$350,000 to $400,000 a year.
Annually, from what date to what date? How many years?
From now until 2034. So that's when those bonds mature. We will not extend them at all.
15 years of savings between...
So roughly over $5 million that comes right back into, on the, on your debt side. So it will help, but then it's not going to be able to help you on your operating side, but it goes, it's a straight benefit to the taxpayers of Titus County. Absolute, right into their pocketbook. That's a great deal for them. We're estimating the interest rate to be, overall, cost of funds for you to be under 3%. We're guessing 2 and 3/4 percent today. So by the time we get all the, all this thing papered and we got to go back to the rating agencies and get the offering documents and all disclosure documents together, the hard work's really just getting ready to start and all this, that we'll be ready to sell bonds at some point in the next several weeks. And then planning on being able to deliver those late November or sometime right around Thanksgiving. We'll have that in place. This will replace the old bonds and those, the proceeds of this issue. We'll set up an escrow that will pay off those bonds when they're eligible to be paid off in 2021. So that's all done automatically. You don't have to worry about any of the paper. All the, Jeff Golbisher, Bond Counsel, could not be here today, but he'll paper it up. And we, we've worked together on hundreds of these. And so rest assured, it will be where, it will be streamlined where you all won't have to worry about it. Just save money and enjoy it.
About a six-week process if we approve this today.
Yes, sir.
And from when you and I first talked, you still feel like that window of opportunity is going to exist for us and that we'll meet the parameters in order to go through?
Yes, sir. And the parameters are, just to restate those, that we're not going to issue any more debt than what's already outstanding on that. So there's about 30.6 million that we'll be refunding, and that's what, what you have, that we would not issue more than that. Again, not extending the maturity. We're not, this allows us to, in case the markets being volatile, we need to pull it back for a week or even a month or whatever. This approval, should you all approve this, is a six-month window that gives the delegation to county judge to sign off on it so long as these parameters are made, are met. And so the interest rate cannot be any higher than 3 and 1/4 percent. We must have at least net present value savings of 8%. It's double-digit now. So we should be fine, but we do want to, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to do the deal if we can pull it back and wait and see an opportunity to come on down. Again, you've got until 2021 before these are called. And so if we got to pull it back, market interest rates start going up quickly, then we'll sit back and we'll come back to you later.
I've got a couple of new Commissioners here that were not here when we did this the last time. This will be the third time that we've done this on our loop bonds.
Yes, sir.
And just to kind of break down the mechanics, because I want these guys to have an understanding and anybody else that might be interested in what we're doing. You said that our bonds are not callable for another couple of years. So what is it that we're doing right now?
So when, when the county issues bonds, it is public debt. This, this is a securities offering that you hear the stocks and bonds and the securities markets. Titus County is actually issuer of these, of these bonds. And so there were several series that were done for the loop in 10 and 12, right, Judge? And so we, we refunded or refinanced some of those bonds in 2017, I believe, for the 2010 issues. And really, it's just like refinancing your home. So you're, you're just taking higher interest rates, highest interest rate, and you're replacing them with lower interest rates. We're using the lower interest rate proceeds to pay off the higher interest rate proceeds. And now our payments are at these lower rates. So you're just swapping higher rates for lower rates and, and the market is, and taking advantage of market conditions.
How does it, if the bonds are not callable till '21, how is it that we can do this two years in advance of that?
I thought you wanted me to keep this simple.
Well, I've forgotten this quite honestly, and I want to remind myself so that I can explain it properly to people.
Okay. So what, there is an escrow fund that is set up. So on, we'll sell these bonds November 5th and hope to deliver them November 27th. And those bonds can't be called until '21. So what ends up happening on November 27th, those bonds are then held into a restricted escrow account that you can't get to, that's held by the paying agent, escrow agent for that. And it's, it's purchased securities, so it is very secure. It's U.S. government securities. And what that is set up to do is, when that call date come, when those bonds can be taken from the investor in 2021, the escrow agent pays them off on your behalf. So all this documentation that, that is part of this agenda item covers all that. And basically, you're ordering, you're ordering the escrow agent and paying agent to do those services for you.
The total volume of bonds in question that we're hoping to get refinanced is 30 million?
Yes, sir. 3.6.
So, and the interest rate currently on our bonds, about?
The rate is 5.
5%. And we're hoping to get south of 3%.
South of 3.
So on $30 million, a couple of points of interest, it's a nice savings to the county. And again, if it all goes well, we hope to reap about $5 million in total savings over the next 15 years.
And in the spirit of transparency and disclosure, all the fees, because we don't work for free, the bond lawyers don't work for free, the rating agencies don't work for free. So there's, there's fees involved here of a little over $100,000. And that will then, that's built into the deal. So the county doesn't have, that's, but the savings is all net to you. So in that 30.6 million that's being refunded, the, the cost of issuance and the cost of doing the transaction will be taken out of that deal. So you're not, there's no out-of-pocket expense to do it.
So from now, from now going forward, there is no additional costs that we'll have to find a way to pay for. It will be net savings. Again, the lower the rate that we can get on these new, on this new issue, the better for us. And we'll hope that that timing turns out to be right. Obviously, this, this is stuff we don't deal with a lot, so guys, there's no dumb questions. If you have any questions here that you want to understand a little better...
It's a lot of money.
John will answer it for you. This is the, is this the biggest refinance we've done?
Yes.
So that extra money off that payment that we're saving, will go into that fund that pays on it in 2021?
Well, essentially, to boil it down, it'll mean that our debt service, our annual debt service each year will be reduced by hopefully somewhere between $300,000 and $400,000. So that, and again, that's going to affect your interest and sinking fund rate. This might free up some room there when we start talking again about our annex project. That might enable us to have some available monies for annual debt service on that project, should we look forward with it. But it doesn't affect the maintenance and operation budget, but anytime you can lower that INS rate, of course, the savings to the taxpayer is just as good as the MNO being lowered.
Yeah, the savings is directly reflected to the taxpayer, so that, that will reduce your INS tax rate. And it is pretty commonplace, judgely, that, you know, we've seen a number of counties taking the savings and kind of backing into being able to do a shorter-term type note to do some other improvements with the cash flow savings there. So that the taxpayers aren't, aren't having to absorb an increase in their, in their tax rate to do that.
Another thing that I'd comment, we have a whole lot more debt out there on the loop bonds than just the 30 million. But we only can take advantage of 30 million because that's how much is going to be callable or that's how much we can pay off early two years from now.
There's another piece that is eligible as well, not quite, it's 20 million or so, that was the limited tax, tax portion of that pass-through deal in 2012. It did not quite work as well as, the savings were not as, as economical. There was not as near the economic benefit that this one. So we'll keep watching that one.
And as long as interest rates stay less than what we originally locked in at, we'll have future opportunities to do this. Although every year that goes by, I keep saying this is the last year for low rates, but here we are with...
What do we know? Yeah.
It's amazing. So good, good for us. Any other questions or further elaboration? Okay. Well, that's a mouthful that I read to you there. It's the same thing that we did back in 2017, and we'll rely on John and his crew and Jeff to lead us through this. What needs to be signed today if we approve this to go forward?
I think Jeff has probably provided some documentation.
Okay. He sent that.
Yeah, he sent that out, so...
And then will you be back between now and then for any reason?
If you need me to be here for further explanation, if something goes haywire, I'll be here. Let's just, let's just hope that everything goes smoothly and we'll have a good report.
Otherwise, you'll provide me with all those big, thick books for...
As we start coming up to that November 5th pricing date, we'll be in close contact with you and the county auditor to visit about where the market is and kind of what we're seeing. And we can make a decision from there whether or not we need to tap the brakes or let's full-speed ahead.
Okay. No risk involved in something like this? Even if rate, interest rates didn't do what we expect, we're not getting ourselves into a jam in any way, are we?
The only potential jam would be everybody involved here works on a contingency, so nothing happens, you owe nothing other than standard intercourse. So if for some reason this doesn't work and we've started the, started the clock with S and P, their fee's about $15,000 to $20,000. So there is some risk there. But again, we've got six months to get, as long as it's done within a six-month period, they're, they're not going to chase us down for that.
Okay. So that's, that's our net at risk?
Yeah.
$20,000. But you think it's pretty low risk at this point?
I think it's pretty low risk, yeah. They're still talking about lowering rates, you know, for the next month.
Okay. I'll read it again if anybody needs. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion basically where you're approving John and Hilltop to work on our behalf to get $30 million in bonds refinanced for us.
Make a motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming out just for this. You got anything else to do in East Texas today?
Uh, no, sir.
Did it rain on you the whole time?
It rained on us the whole way. We, we, and the flight got canceled from, we were down at the Municipal League Convention in San Antonio. Our flight got canceled last night, so we rented a car and drove so we could be here and see. It rained on us the whole way. So we need the rain.
We need the rain.
It's a pain in the butt driving.
All right. Thanks again. And tell me your son's name once more?
Michael.
Michael, how long you been doing this?
Uh, a little over a year.
Okay. Good deal. Welcome aboard. Yeah, no time. Okay. Getting close to the end. Item number 12, time to approve oral and written reports of county officials. Ms. Barbara?
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you.
Is this the year ending?
That is as of October the 10th. This is not the official year end. The year-end balances were in the, in the front of the budget. It had the estimated balances there.
Make a motion, we approve?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Applewhite, second by Commissioner Fitch for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 13 is our treasurer's report for your consideration.
Make a motion, we approve treasurer's report.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 14, approve budget amendments, if any?
Yes, sir. You've got five amendments that are all prepared, that you ran up. And you can do, um, precinct two and precinct four, requesting to do some, stipending their budget, but to do some things right. No, sir. No new money, and they've all been, and they've all been signed by you. Five, five of them, sir. Yes, sir. No, sir.
Seen money? All right. Looks like we've got signatures on all of these from you. So you've seen them? I don't really have anything new to report to you there, other than text dot seems to be changing some of their focus, not just from automobile freeways, but considering other factors, other forms of transportation, such as rail, which would be important out here for us with our short-line railroad. But I appreciate the way that they get public input, and so there was some other elected officials there, and they do a good job of making the presentations to keep us informed, but more importantly, to give us opportunity to give input. And this is statewide, basically not just at our level, but they want input from us in the regions that we work and live in. So that was on Tuesday. I'm certainly glad we have this opportunity to refinance these bonds. Let's hope that things stay in our favor, and we are able to do that. I am still waiting on the final appraisal from our appraiser on the two buildings behind the annex. I thought I might have that by today, but I don't have that. I will let you know the results of that as soon as I get it. That's all I have. Commissioner Parker, I'll start on your end today.
I don't have anything to do with it.
Commissioner Applewhite?
No, sir.
Commissioner Fitch?
Good.
Commissioner Riddle?
No.
All right. Thank you all for your attendance today, especially our guests. We appreciate you being here, and wish everybody a happy holiday on Monday. And with your motion, we will adjourn our meeting for today.
Make a motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you all for your attendance today, especially our guests. We appreciate you being here, and wish everybody a happy holiday on Monday. And with your motion, we will adjourn our meeting for today.
Make a motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All right.